That has always been a way that I've tried to make good decisions and provide leadership on certain issues. And I'm proud that I authored the letters that we sent previously to the NRC, to PG&E, asking for these tests, asking that the relicensing be delayed until we had all of the necessary information that tests like this provide. So I do think it's important to remind people, there are some disagreements that have been stated, certainly by experts and others, but the whole idea of getting these tests was operating within the realm of getting as much information as possible to ensure the safety of our community in the event of something like Fukushima. But we actually have been advocating for this a year before that. So this is part of a larger picture that I always take it as an essential part of my responsibility as a district pre-supervisor, which is making sure, working with PG&E, working with our community to make sure that plant is safe. Because, as was pointed out, regardless of what people might want to give to us, we have limited to no authority on the future and even the present of the plant. So what we can do is act as advocates, what we can do is express our community's concerns as best as we can, we can try to distill those things, and we can also do things like speak with experts and get their best considered judgments. And whether you want to criticize or not, Senator Blaisley is an expert in this area. And so we do take his considered judgments seriously, as do others, and should. We also operate within a realm of extreme practicality. As much as there are some people who think they would like for the county to do without Diablo Canyon, or to make Diablo Canyon do something differently, that is entirely out of our hands, regardless of what you might wish us to have authority over. That is completely a federal matter. That's not something that, you know, so I operate under the assumption, looking at what the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has done and participating in many conversations with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, including commissioners of the five-member commission, my understanding and my belief is that Diablo Canyon is likely to be relicensed. The number of reactors that have been relicensed since Fukushima is probably beyond a dozen now. That is, so we're not seeing plants going offline. We're not seeing plants being turned down. So from my perspective, operating within that realm, it's important for us to have as much information as possible. And I think that we've done a good job of working with PG&E, working with state agencies, working with other decision-makers to try to come to some general consensus that more information is better. More safety information is better for everybody. But as has been pointed out, and pointed out more recently certainly than over the years, this does not come without some risks and certainly some potential harm to our marine environment. I am deeply conflicted, and we've spent time talking to people in our fishermen, in our fishery industries, and we've always stated all along that we think that should there be these tests, that there needs to be truly fair, adequate compensation and a process that will ensure that. We've always pushed for survey design and survey vessel that would have the least impact on the environment. That's always been part of what we've asked for. We've always been incredibly sensitive to those issues. I think that some of what we hear from the time that this has become more public, I think the concerns has been overly exaggerated or speculative based on what the impacts may be. That said, it doesn't mean that the concerns that people express to us are not legitimate, but we have to make, sometimes we have to make decisions that are really with the best information that we've been able to get, which is not always based upon, you know, the emotion of a particular issue. And certainly, the emotion of this particular issue expressed here, expressed to us in emails is that people are concerned that these tests will harm marine life unnecessarily. And we get that, I get that. It's not something that we want, it's not something we take lightly. I think to call that, to say that these tests have any other reason, other, you know, to say, for instance, we've heard some things like, you know, what are you going to learn from these? I think that's not a well-considered opinion because we understand from both the industry itself, people who are involved in seismic studies and so forth, that these are extremely important sources of information. That's not really been well-contested. There is some difference of agreement about how the surveys are conducted, what vessels are done, but there's not really much of an expert conflict on whether these sources of information are extremely valuable to understanding the true seismicity risks associated with where the plant is. And we can't really go back in time, and that's not our job either. You know, we're not going to go back and debate whether Diablo should or should not be there, should or should not be, if where it's located, that doesn't really do us any good. So all we can do is act practically. So we have a difficult task. We heard from Mr. Blaisley that he thinks that what's being proposed is sufficiently good. We've heard from the independent review panel, with the exception of Supervisor Gibson, that they think that what's being proposed is good, or sufficiently good, perhaps in the same way, or at least will provide that information. We've also heard that perhaps there could be another way to do it, or perhaps the best way is to really, is to delay it and insist that the survey is designed and the vessel is designed and everything is done correctly upfront before any testing goes forward, and then make that go forward. Those, and then of course, what a lot of people said, we should scrap it altogether, do no testing, argue against any testing ever. And I would say that that position, which is probably the predominant one we've heard today, is likely, very likely to succeed if we take that absolute position at the Coastal Commission, which means it's very likely that Diablo Canyon will enter into the relicensing process without this information at all. The NRC does not require this information, they will not require this information. No other authority is responsible for that. And so our decision really is looking at long-term, which is, do we have, do we have a process that will allow us to get the most information that's needed to make an evaluation for the long-term safety of that plant, which is the long-term safety of all the people in this county, all the people who visit this county, and all of the forms of life in this county? That's a consequential decision, so I just wanted to try to frame it as best as we can, because those are really the choices. I think it's, that may be the easiest choice, may be the most emotionally satisfying choice to say, let's just argue completely against testing. I don't know that that is really in the long-term interest of our community's safety. That's where I'm at, at least. I would rather see us try to recommend something along the lines of what we've been recommending all along, in terms of having the information gathered in the best manner, the most, the least impactful manner, in a manner that would provide the fairest compensation for all affected industries, from fishing to some of the onshore fishing-related industries. All of those things can happen, or we can ask for that. Again, we're in the asking authority, that's it. All we can do is send a letter to Coastal Commission and express our opinions, but other than that, we don't have an authority. So we can, we can do it that way, we can do it, we can completely support what's already proposed, or we can, again, do what a fair number of people who are here today say they want. And it's a difficult position, but I think, so we get the big one, right? So that's where I think we should look at, which, where we want to go with this, if we're going to write a letter that does this or not, write a letter that reinforces what we think is best for all, which doesn't mean we've never understood, though more of you understand now potentially than you did previously. We never operated under the assumption that these things, that we did this lightly, that we just thought seismic testing was, you know, this little thing that gets done and there's not, you know, there's not any, not any potential consequences associated with it. That was understood, you've understood it more recently than perhaps we did, but we never went about this lightly. And I don't think, whatever we do today, we go about this lightly. We've heard many hours of testimony, and that's, that's the good process that helps us. So with that, I'll turn it over to my --
Okay, well, thank you Supervisor Hill. I'm not sure that really solidified any direct action, but I think it laid the issue out there that there are two sides of the issue, and one that you articulated is the long-term safety of our community as far as the operation of Diablo Canyon is concerned, and whether or not it's prudent to oppose any kind of further testing to get as much information as we can to ensure the safety, the long-term safety of the region and of inhabitants, both marine and terrestrial. But I think perhaps a good way to start the process of determining what we want to do, what action we want to take, is to look back at the action we took in August, that we all agreed on, and that was the letter that we sent to the California State Lands Commission with conditions for moving forward, and a conversation with Supervisor Gibson, and then knowing the action of the State Lands Commission, we know that all of those conditions were not met, and I still stand behind those, and I hope my colleagues on the board do as well, because again, those are things that we thought before any high-energy seismic studies we conducted offshore here, that those conditions ought to be met. And I was wondering Supervisor Gibson, if you would articulate those again, and we can get consensus among our colleagues as to whether or not we want to continue advocating for those conditions. And then there are some other issues that have come up since we sent that letter in August. Could you articulate those for us Supervisor Gibson?
What I'll do is quote from our, from our letter to State Lands Commission, that's exactly where I was going to go. This is the position of the Board as of the last time we considered this, and in fact, the letter to the State Lands Commission has been transmitted to the Coastal Commission as the position of the Board as of September 17th. And that was under a letter signed by the Chair, because that was where we were at that point. The relevant paragraph is not too long, it reads, "Our Board believes that the State Lands Commission should only issue a permit for the Diablo Canyon seismic surveys if the following conditions are met. One, that all environmental impacts were fully understood and mitigated to the maximum degree possible, understanding that mitigation to a level of insignificance may not be possible. Number two, that all unavoidable economic impacts are fully and fairly compensated. And three, the technical details of the survey design have been subjected to independent third-party review by industry-qualified experts to confirm that the best available technology is applied to this crucial investigation." Now, I would submit to you, colleagues, that none of those three conditions have been met, certainly not met fully. And that being the case, would we to write, where I am right now, would be to write, rather than having the Coastal Commission infer from that statement where we are, that we write that we would be opposed to the proposal before them because none of the conditions that we articulated in August have been met. That seems to me to be a relevant starting point. The question is, what's changed since August? And, you know, again, it's not my intent to dig deeply into the technical details, I've been doing that over the course of the year. I'll touch on a couple at an appropriate time in our conversation, but I think it's, I think it's clear that none of those three conditions has been met, certainly not for them.
Right, and I concur with that, and I think it is appropriate at this point to take that stance. Also, over the course of the past couple of months, we have heard testing only before the Fish and Game Commission, other experts have weighed in, and there's some concerns about the adequacy of the EIR that we might want to speak to, one of which is the lack of potential impacts to humans that may be recreating in the ocean at the time of testing. Apparently, that was not considered, and we might want to include that. And also, there was a question raised about the information that has already been assembled through a variety of other testing techniques that have been used, and that information has not been fully studied to determine what it yields, and I think it's appropriate that we take a look at that to better define what additional information that we might, might need to better design any further testing. The question has been raised as to whether or not there's other technology that would be less impactful to the marine environment than what's being proposed, and I assume that would come out if we did have the independent peer review of both the protocol and the technology that's being proposed by PG&E. So I would ask that we include that in a statement to the Coastal Commission, that we ask that all existing data be thoroughly analyzed to help determine what type of additional information is needed, and again, if there are other technologies less impactful to the marine environment that would give us that data. Also, I question the immediacy of doing this. I mean, there doesn't appear to be a need to do this right now. I don't know why we can't take the time to analyze the data we already have and really take a thorough look at what's being proposed, and then if it's necessary. Yeah, those are mine, Supervisor Meacham.
You guys have pretty much hit on everything, I think, but I think I was going to go where Supervisor Gibson was in terms of the three items, and I don't think there've been many, I was interested to hear that. But my question is, when you talk about the environmental impacts need to be fully mitigated, the economic impacts, who makes that final determination that if, in fact, they have been met, because that's a couple of questions I had, I mean, you answer that. There's been a lot of discussion about alternatives, and I know a lot of folks say, well, there's other ways to do this, but they're not specific about what they are. I would like to know if there are alternatives that have been utilized in other areas of the world. I know that the oil industry does this all the time, and I, maybe I'm not the skeptic that a lot of others are, I don't think anybody's put on oil in here, I don't identify the subject issues. So I would be interested to know that, what other methods have been utilized that have not been as impactful. The other thing that I think is, that concerns me somewhat in regard to, in the staff report, and it talks about the CPUC acknowledged that the $64.25 million cost is an estimate, and that actual cost may exceed this current estimate. I'm a little uncomfortable with that, not knowing exactly how far this is going to go from a dollar standpoint, because it's you and I that are paying the bill, and that's a concern, so I don't know where that's going to go. And along with Supervisor Patterson, I'm not really convinced there's this immediate need to do this. Having said that, if we were not to do that, and an earthquake did happen in two years from now, these same folks are going to be in your ass, that's why we didn't do something. So I think that, I think we need to, I don't, it's a tough balance to maintain. I do not see the immediacy at this point. You know, I would like to have further information relative to options that could be available, but I would like a little bit more specifics relative to costs. And speaking of which, what would, this question's been asked a number of times, what would $64 million do if it was invested in the existing plant in terms of upgrading that? You know, I don't know what that would consist of. In addition to that, when we talk about increasing the seismic structural capability of a plant, if you go from a 7.5 to an 8.5, what does that cost? What is a 1 up to a 9, what does that cost? I have no idea. And so, to me, when we say that this is an estimate, an actual cost may exceed, this is like an open checkbook that says, spend whatever you like, and I'm not fully excited about it.
I think that might be something we point out, unfortunately, it's the CPUC that makes that determination, but I think Supervisor Meacham, the one comment about delaying this further and then having a seismic event that adversely impacts the plant, anything that we come up with as a result of this, any further testing that is done and analysis, it will be years before it can be effectively dealt with as a plant.
Get guaranteed years before an earthquake, I want you to predict that.
But all I'm saying is, if we knew today that there was an issue, it would be years before they could actually engineer a, a technology or do any engineering or upgrades that would address that. Supervisor Hill?
Yeah, I'd like to maybe put out the way forward. I would, I would suggest, you know, we've captured these concerns, and we can make sure that we capture it in a letter, let Supervisor Gibson draft it, I know he's going to go to Coastal, and he can deliver it before and also speak from it in testimony. My sense is that these concerns, in terms of the conditions not being met, some of these other additional ones that we've mentioned, in terms of existing data being analyzed, economic data being analyzed, I mean, we all agree, we don't, you know, the time issue is not where, that's not how we operate, that's how PG&E is operating within their own decision-making process and within the NRC process, but that's not, our concern is ultimately get everything right on behalf of our citizens and our ratepayers. But I would put this, because I'm, again, I'm still concerned, I would put this more in the, in the positive sense of, you know, we ask that the Coastal Commission require these conditions be met before issuing a permit, because my concern is if we just tell them, well, we don't think this is good, and they should reject it, that eventually what's going to happen is that, you know, PG&E will rightfully be able to say to the public, look, you know, we tried to do this, but, you know, we couldn't get the permits, the NRC's giving us the okay to go forward with relicensing, and they do. We don't have the, you know, we have an opportunity to get the information that we need to get on behalf of our citizens now. We're not going to have that opportunity later, really, even though people talk about the long-term seismic program. This is, this is probably the best opportunity to get the best amount of information, so rapid and just a flat, you know, say, look, these conditions are the ones that we think have to be met before a permit is granted. We're not concerned with the timeline being, you know, we're not concerned with that the Coastal Commission says, you know, come back to us in six months or whatever, that's something that can be worked out. But I would like to see us put it in a sense that we still maintain that we think that this information is necessary, but we think that these conditions have to be met first. That way, we're still kind of, we're still saying, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not, I think we're not abandoning our ultimate position that we've had all along, which is, let's advocate for the long-term safety of the plant.
And Supervisor Hill, if I may, again, until we do a thorough analysis of the data we have, the data we may still need, and the available technology to acquire that data, I think that we could preface our letter with the emphasis on the need to assure the long-term safety of the plant as long as it's operating, and, you know, that's the bottom line, and how we get there, you know, is another matter. Supervisor Tushar?
Thank you Chairman Patterson. I too express the concerns of my colleagues about the conditions not being met, the conditions Mr. Meacham brings forward on the cost, because like he said, we're all ratepayers. And the other thing that comes to mind is the fact that everybody compares this to the earthquake in Fukushima and how bad it was. Well, if they'd have done the proper thing in Fukushima ahead of time, wouldn't it have been that bad? If they'd have put the pieces in place, had the seismic studies, done what they were supposed to do, would they have had that kind of failure with the 9.0 earthquake? And you think about part of it, is the fact that the place where it's built in Fukushima has basically failed, it's a very unsolid type of ground, and I mean, I'm not taking sides, but that's a question that comes to mind. Had they done their due diligence, would they have had that problem? And we had people here earlier today that were complaining about the rules and regulations that we have in the state of California, that we have in this county. That's one of the reasons we have it, is to protect the citizens and protect the people of the county and the state and the things that we do. We do a lot better job than a lot of foreign countries and a lot of other states and this nation, and I think that's something that we can look at.
Supervisor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me pick up on colleagues' comments here, maybe we have a couple of thoughts we can string together. I think we need to get it off the table. This is not about oil. This is not out there surveying oil, that's a --
Well, if I could jump in on that, just to remind people, you know, when I first came to the office in 2009, I wrote the letter to the Secretary of the Interior, Salazar, affirming our opposition to offshore oil. I voted obviously for that letter, so did Mr. Gibson. We have a ballot measure that passed in the eighties that requires any onshore oil facilities have to come before a vote of the people, so the nonsense about oil is nonsense. It's unfortunate because I think it ends up, you know, distracting from the legitimate and important issues, but that's nonsense. It always has been nonsense, whether we're talking about Mr. Gibson or Mr. Blaisley, so that needs to be understood.
Let me just make two other observations on that matter. We're under state and federal moratorium against offshore oil drilling and exploration, and there are already people who look out off our coast and want to drill there. The existence of this data, no matter what it shows, does not change the balance here, so it's not, it's not about oil. I think it is useful to speak to some people's concerns about, well, what would people, what would the regulators do with this data? What's the ultimate goal? And the question of surveying the geology is about trying to understand when the plant is built to adequately withstand the maximum credible earthquake that might be expected. The lesson of Fukushima, because they were expecting eight, they got a magnitude nine, and the disaster is obvious. So we operate, and my colleagues have already expressed it, from a core conviction that we need to as fully and thoroughly understand the seismic earthquake hazard to Diablo Canyon as we possibly can. That doesn't contradict the, at this point, the initial recommendation that we oppose what's before the, before the Coastal Commission. The consequences of understanding that earthquake threat can be boiled down into three, three possible outcomes, and it's very simple, much more simple than it would be in practice. Either it's determined that the plant is designed to withstand the maximum credible earthquake and that we don't have to be further concerned about that, or the plant is not designed to withstand the maximum credible earthquake and it needs to be fixed, or that it's not designed to withstand the maximum credible earthquake and it needs to be closed. And I know there's deeply held convictions as to what should happen, I mean, there are people who have no problem, you know, carry on, Diablo is too important to worry about, let it operate. There are others who would seek to close it tomorrow. But those are the decisions that are momentous decisions, that are consequential decisions, that we have to have information to reason with, to consider. And we're operating here in a highly imperfect regulatory -- And we are operating here in a highly imperfect regulatory environment framework. The way that this is organized and the way that it's been executed is not the way it should be as we look at how we should make important decisions about something as important and consequential as nuclear power. We're also operating in an environment where we are asked to choose a course of action when we don't have all the facts we'd like to know. And that's a very difficult situation, but that's where we are, and that's what we have to do. So let me start with a string of ideas here that I think would be our position, that first of all, you know, we start with the Coastal, with the letter to State Lands, which is on record in Coastal, and in our subsequent communication to Coastal indicate that the conditions outlined in that letter not having been met, that this board closes the project before Coastal as it's proposed. Second, that we maintain a core concern that the earthquake hazard to Diablo Canyon is thoroughly and objectively analyzed. I think that's an important statement. And then on the way forward, I think ideas that colleagues have touched on as regards the matter of looking at the workup of data that's been collected onshore and the low-energy work offshore would certainly be important to inform the kind of independent survey, the independent review that I have been asking be applied to this project all this year. In doing the design of a modern seismic survey such as this, the baseline of information that you gather from all previous work is an important component of how you decide where to go from here. And let me use, if I might, just briefly, a medical analogy, that the business of doing a high-energy 3D offshore survey is like doing a very invasive diagnostic medical procedure. There is going to be impact, there's going to be discomfort, there could be potentially a scar. You wouldn't undertake that kind of invasive procedure without, first of all, having looked carefully at all the non-invasive things you can do. And if you were contemplating moving forward with that invasive medical procedure, you would want to know that who was doing it was properly trained and using the best equipment possible. You think of that, making that decision for yourself or your family. So that's the best analogy I could come up with for talking about what I've been asking for for a long time, which is that independent review and in fact, a proper independent design of this survey. And that, again, a lot of complications with the regulatory framework that I don't want to get into at this point. But on the way forward, I think, given our observations about not having immediacy or not having a deadline of this year that we can recognize, that the workup of the onshore data and the low-energy offshore data is important in informing to deciding what happens next in terms of understanding our core concern. And Supervisor Meacham asked about, you know, who decides whether full and fair compensation of that, of the ocean-dependent industries? And it's more than commercial fishing, it is recreational fishing, it is diving.
And the environmental issue.
And the environmental issue, and the shore. But let me get to the environmental issues here in just a second. But the economic impacts have been very widely discussed, and we've heard from a number of affected interests here. And what I have, in talking to commercial fishing organizations from both ports, individuals, I made it clear that this board, again, is already on record indicating that is a condition that we want to see fulfilled before any permit is issued. It is a negotiation, and the best I can determine from the conversation is that that negotiation simply hasn't happened. A mediator has not been arranged, or at least has not been engaged and executed on mediation. But I still think the principle remains that before this survey goes forward, our commercial interests dependent on the ocean need to have some certainty about how they're going to be treated, because there are potential impacts, both environmental, physical environmental impacts, perceptual impacts, things that they're going to have to deal with. So I would call on PG&E and the commercial interests to engage that discussion that have a full, or fully, and it should remain an important part of our conditions. And then finally, on the environmental impacts, that's a tough one. The environmental impact report that State Lands issued was certified, and I asked them yesterday, the statute of limitations has run out, that impact report has not been challenged. Now, the Coastal Commission uses its own version of environmental review, so it's not particularly necessarily applicable to that EIR. But I would seek colleagues' advice as to how we talk about what more we want to see about the environmental impacts. The one impact that has come up since the State Lands Commission that I myself don't fully understand is the impacts to humans in the water. That's the new one for me. That's not one that I've heard discussed in State Lands, that's one that I've heard brought up since. I have seen the plots that show 160 decibel levels at the shoreline based on some modeling. I've not heard a good plan as to how people are going to be protected, if indeed they need to be protected from that level of sound. That one is, that one's a concrete one, that one's obvious to me. Whether colleagues have other thoughts as to how that you want to talk about environmental impacts, I will just add my observation. I understand people's love of the ocean. I love the ocean, I'm on the ocean at every chance that I possibly can get. I think that the most dire descriptions of what a seismic survey would do to the ocean environment, I've said publicly, are not realistic. I think they come from a very deep-rooted connection to the ocean that a lot of people have, but in an area where we don't have all the facts, I think some folks have taken the interpretation of those impacts beyond what I consider realist. That said, I don't have scientific studies to detail exactly what they are. How colleagues would want to respond to that question, I'm open to suggestions.
From what I've heard over the course of the last couple of months, since this was last debated here at the board, there is, I think, a degree of uncertainty articulated about the extent of the environmental impact to the marine environment. So I would simply put forth the concern about the potential impact and some validation through, and Mr. Strickland made reference to other testing in the Gulf and off the coast of Peru where this has been done and there has been no adverse marine impact noted. But then at the same time, you said there later on that this is the first time that there's been extensive mitigation measures put in place, and so I'm curious as to how they know if there haven't been further extensive follow-ups where testing has been done that there isn't significant environmental impact to the marine environment. And so I would ask for substantiation that that is indeed the case.
Short of a refereed scientific paper, is that the kind of...
Well, yeah, just, you know, have the experts debate this, because apparently there are ones that feel that there is potentially very significant environmental impacts, in particular to marine mammals. And, you know, we need to know that. We had some discussion of that at our hearing in August, you know, some follow-up studies and that sort of thing, but I think we need to take a closer look, or at least recommend that before we go forward with this type of high-energy seismic study, that we have more information about the potential impact to the marine environment. I think we do need, as you suggested, some follow-up on the potential impacts to humans that may be in the water during testing and how that's going to be addressed.
Mr. Meacham?
Supervisor Meacham?
Yeah, Chairman, you kind of hit on something about the impacts to the marine life, and I did go on this bluevoice.org to look at the dolphins that were in Peru. I read that article. They were clear that they didn't make specific assertions that these seismic activities were the cause of this, but in the same breath, they couldn't find anything else and any reason for that. What I'd like to be able to see is some kind of dispel that type of, you know, if there's an argument against that, I'd like to hear that at some point. And then a question for PG&E, is PG&E contributing any funding at all to alternative methods of seismic study as opposed to what's being suggested now? We heard about electromagnetic or magnetic fields. I don't know, I'm not a scientist, but when I hear these things, it kind of generates a lot of thinking for me to start looking into what are the possibilities, and I don't know what PG&E's...
Is that a question as well? I've came to address Mr. Strickland.
So I can tell you the magnometer that was mentioned, that that will be part of the process that we're using for the high-energy survey, the imaging that's performed off the coast. When you look at technology, the high-energy sound source is the state-of-the-art technology that's used today to be able to image at depth. I'm sure Dr. Gibson can speak more to that to confirm that that is the state-of-the-art technology that's utilized today. The differences then are associated with how you tune the air guns, how you tune the receivers, what types of processing equipment that you use, but that is the state-of-the-art. I have our environmental consultant here that can speak to you at length on questions associated with our EIR and why that the project as configured today with performing only Box Four really gives the opportunity to be able to prove that the, that there is little to no impact to the environment and that with the monitoring programs that have been established and actually put in play today, that that will perform the validation that shows whether or not the survey is appropriate to be continued for the balance of the survey this year or whether to bring it back next year, complete Boxes One and Two. So at some point, I really want to leave you with this, that this first survey for this year really is just a precursor to show that the technology is appropriate and that the monitoring and mitigation associated with the impact on the environment are effective.
And Mr. Strickland, assuming that as this is being monickered, if in fact you see kind of an extensive abuse in some respects, that it stops?
Absolutely, and I'd like to have my colleagues speak for just a moment to tell you really what the EIR requires as far as stop work and associated with what the impacts would be if there was harm to marine mammals.
And in the same conversation, you could address Supervisor Dr. Gibson's...
Bruce.
His, he made the comment that the environmental portion of this was very difficult to identify all the impacts. Can you touch on that?
Yes, Simon Poulter with Padre Associates assisting PG&E in acquiring the permits for the project. As you know, there's a federal process and a state process that's been undergoing. Right now, we're in the final stages of negotiating our incidental harassment authorization from the National Marine Fisheries and from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. As part of that, there is a program called an Adaptive Management Plan, which is being developed by the federal agencies. The key component of that is that an incidental take, a harassment of a marine mammal as defined by the Marine Mammal Protection Act, we are asking for a Level B harassment. That means any animal that enters within side of 160 decibel range is counted as a take, and this can be as simple as them changing direction, lifting their head, it is not an adverse impact to them physically. Where the impact occurs is at the 180 decibel level, there is a potential for impact, and that is where we are immediately required to shut the air guns down. Now, as part of that ongoing process, we are being required to implement this Adaptive Management Plan, which if there is a stranding of an organism, whether it be a turtle, marine mammal, sea otter, instantly stop. They are going to be the ones monitoring it, they have aircraft already flying, assessing the populations in the area. We are basically going to have one of the most monitored seismic studies in probably U.S. history, I don't think I can state that probably improperly, because they are, we have, instead of just the Lancet doing the marine mammal monitoring, we now have two additional vessels out there with three monitors on them. As you know, the State Lands increased the exclusion rate of where we have to shut down the air guns, we have certain marine mammals in the area. So the environmental impacts, as discussed in the EIR, have actually been further mitigated by all of these measures, and I, as Daryl did mention, we are now down to one of four originally proposed survey boxes, and that was through the consultation process with State Lands. They are the ones who asked us to limit it now to two years and reduce the footprint of the survey. We have now worked with National Marine Fisheries to further reduce that to Box Four to allow them to basically implement these mitigation measures to see how effective they are, so that when we start surveys in Box One and Two, which are further to the south where there's a higher population, the Moro Bay harbor port is actually more in Muster Bay and Point Sal that it is actually more O Bay, which is a misnomer unfortunately. So those are the kind of measures that are ongoing. These are all going to be part of that permit condition, which unfortunately can't be issued until the Coastal Commission acts, because they need to give the federal consistency before the agencies can put all of that in place.
How have you, or the latest issue that seems to...
She gave us a last one to guys in line, right?
Yeah, we've worked very closely, in fact, those are our diagrams that the Coastal Commission prepared. One of the things that that diagram doesn't show is that the majority of the near-shore areas are actually in turns, and that's when the mitigation air gun, that's just one gun, that's a low-level sound, is basically a warning to the marine mammals not to come back into the area after the ramp-ups have occurred. We are continuing to work with them. The number of 145 decibels that was used is actually a 15-minute exposure to a completely submerged individual. Also, the modeling that we have done does not take into account wind, waves, all the things that are occurring right on the shoreline, and all of the experts we've talked to have basically indicated that very noisy environment, that interaction within the surfel is going to be very hard to even come up with a predictable model. But, you know, we are going to make sure that, you know, we have notices out to everybody that the survey is going on, the exposure levels that are depicted in those diagrams are the worst case as far as the modeling itself.
Thank you, appreciate it for you. Starting if I could from the end of Supervisor Meacham's...
I have a question, Mr. Strickland, at some point, but it's not related, if you wanted to follow up.
Well, I just, I mean, the decision-makers on this are going to be the Coastal Commission, so I mean, this is relatively new, it's completely new information, to me at least, on the human impacts. I think our letter should still express our concerns that those are very clearly understood as part of one of the conditions that we care about. Let me just comment very briefly on the question of alternative methods. Yes, we could go out and measure the Earth's magnetic field, that tells us something about the Earth, but it does not tell us anything at the level of detail that's really necessary to make the seismic threat analysis. In the medical analogy, it would be akin sort of to feeling an abdomen, and yeah, you could maybe feel that there was something not normal there, but you wouldn't have the kind of detail that you really need to make a full diagnosis. And then finally, I oppose, in my dissenting opinion, within the IPRP, most recent position letter to the Coastal Commission, which I'm happy to talk to colleagues about, is I oppose the execution of Box Four. As Senator Blaisley said, he doesn't see the proposal there as actually a pilot project, it's a piece of the bigger project. But fundamentally, the recent reports of the crews of the Lancet and the description of its equipment tell me that it is absolutely not at the state-of-the-art, and I'm not willing to incur any environmental impacts on our offshore waters unless we're doing the very best possible job that we can. And also, it's a technical detail, and all I'll say is that as the IPRP looked into the details of the Box Four survey, that it is, in my opinion, that the data of the poorest quality is going to be collected over the targets of the most importance. And so for a variety of those reasons, I just can't support that going forward as any kind of pilot at this point. So again, we've gotten a string of ideas down here, and Mr. Chairman, you have a question to go to?
Yeah. Yes, and thank you Supervisor Gibson. And what I would like to see us do as a board is really generate a list of the issues that we want to propose to the Coastal Commission with whatever recommendation that we're going to have, and that we direct staff to draft that letter for us and then working with Supervisor Gibson and myself, and then we'll get that off to the Coastal Commission. But one of the issues of greatest concern that I do not think has been really fully addressed, and I've heard from a variety of sources that it hasn't been, and that is the compensation to both the fishers and the associated industry. And I'm wondering, Mr. Strickland, if you could tell us where you are in negotiations with the fishers and then the, we've heard from Moro Bay and others, concerns about the economic impact that this testing might have to their communities, and I'm curious where we are with the negotiations on that issue.
It's a fair question. We have not made the progress that PG&E would like to make in that we've met numerous times with the fishing communities in both San Luis Bay and with Moro Bay. What we've agreed to at this point is we've identified a mediator that I understand the Moro Bay fishermen were supposed to have been scheduled, they're still here, they can speak to it, they're supposed to have met with either early this week or later this week. In turn, we'll be scheduled to meet with them in addition. One point that I'd like to make though is that under the process with the coastal development permit, the California Coastal Commission has asked us to take a number of steps that are in addition to what the State Lands Commission required in dealing with the economic impacts to our community. And so with that, not only is there a claims process that has been established such that those that believe that they've incurred some financial harm as a result of the surveys can file a claim and be compensated, but that there is an ability for a mediator then to be brought into the picture if the claimant believes that they are not adequately compensated. In addition, the Coastal Commission has now required that we bring in an advocate to be able to work with the fishermen such that they have somebody to help them fill out the claims forms. This is not only fishermen, it's, you know, other aspects of the community, be it the wholesalers, others that are impacted by the surveys. But the key is the advocate has the ability then to be able to make sure that the claims are appropriately documented and help with the filing process to make sure that claims are compensated in a reasonable amount of time.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Supervisor Hill.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we have the list that we want. I mean, essentially, we're sending a letter that opposes the testing as, if I'm understanding my colleagues, the testing as it's proposed and we have the following reasons for doing so, and I think that that can be hammered out and Supervisor Gibson can speak to it after it's sent as well. And I just want to say, you know, from my own perspective, I don't know that that's completely the right thing to do, but I'm okay with that. I mean, I think that you have to, and it's sort of to others, this is not something we're good at these days, it seems in our culture, but being able to reconcile a certain amount of ambiguity and discrepant views without everybody, you know, there are things that we've heard from today that I absolutely don't agree with, and there are things that I heard today that are persuasive and important to me as well. So I don't know that this is the best decision to go forward with, but I'm okay with it. I would prefer that we do go forward with a five-month decision and that we do the best we can to represent the interests of the community that we've heard both today and the interest that we think we are tasked with looking out for in the future. So I think we're there. Hopefully, we can get to a, I don't know that we need to go much further into the motion part of the deal.
Well, I want to ask Supervisor Gibson to run down the list so we can all hopefully agree on that, that at least we have clarity on the issues that we're pursuing. County Council wanted to make it at this point.
Mr. Mignolte. Counsel's office, sorry. I was just going to offer to run down a list, so if someone else is going to do that, I'm happy to...
Well, I'd like to agree.
I just thought I'd try to bring some closure perhaps or get us a little closer there.
Getting hungry.
So the first thing that I noted was it seemed that there was a round agreement that the letter to State Lands should establish that the conditions of our earlier letter to the State Lands Commission have not been that, and so our letter to the Coastal Commission should assert that we are opposed to the current proposal that's, as I learned from the website today, actually going to be heard on November 14th in Santa Monica at the Coastal Commission meeting. The county's opposed to that proposal, at least in part, because the conditions of our earlier letters to the State Lands Commission have not been satisfied. The second thing I noted was that our long-term position is that earthquake hazards there do need to be fully understood in order to assure the long-term safety of the community, so the board is not opposed to the concept of this sort of testing if that ends up being what is necessary in order to establish long-term safety of the plant. The third thing I noted was that there's a sense that the previous work that has been performed there has not yet been adequately analyzed and that that work should happen before anything else in order to perhaps reduce or have an influence upon the design of the survey work that is ultimately performed. And that there's time to perform such study of that earlier work because the board has determined there really isn't any particular immediacy to moving forward with an offshore survey this season, that that time can be used for that purpose. The next thing I noted, and I think this is on my list, this is number four, would be that there needs to be some resolution of the impacts to coastal-dependent commercial interests and that adequate compensation needs to be made for impacts to those interests and that needs to be completely resolved before a survey should move forward. The fifth thing is that there is new information that has been brought to our attention since the time that the State Lands EIR was certified, and in particular, that has to do with potential impact to human beings who would be in or near the water at the time that the high-frequency testing was taking place. High-energy testing, sorry. Supervisor Patterson noted, and I'm not sure if there was unanimity on this point or not, that he feels that there needs to be further substantiation of the impacts to the marine environment and that he's not satisfied with the results that were certified in the State Lands Commission's EIR. That's what I noted.
And that related to the high-energy seismic study, that technology?
Finally, Supervisor Gibson noted that another reason for our opposition to the current project is that the Box Four survey is not really the pilot project that the board would be willing to approve, but rather perhaps just one part of a larger project. And in addition to that, this is probably a separate point, that so far the vessel that has, and the crew that have been designed to perform the work, in our view, are not the state-of-the-art of this type of survey technology and that perhaps a different outfit performing the work is something that we would demand.
Let me see if I could recap. So I agree with everything that counsel has said and would be prepared to move that we issue a letter to Coastal Commission subject to work with myself and the chair and the admin office and counsel.
Second.
Okay. As to the last point, yeah, as to the last point that counsel raises, as to the question of the specifics of Box Four, I think the observation there is that that specific proposal needs independent review, like the entirety of the survey that we indicated needed independent review when we wrote to State Lands, that the statutes that prompt the need for independent review exist within the Box Four proposal as existed within the larger proposal.
Second. Very good, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and Supervisor Netchum, you have a comment.
Or Mr. Hill runs out of chambers. And I have to say that I was ready to say absolutely no way to this until I had a conversation with Mr. Wiseman.
Wiseman.
Wiseman. Yeah, he convinced me after about an hour's discussion, he gave me a lesson in geology and seismology that really showed the need to be able to do these seismic studies, so I thank him for that education on this aspect of that. But he also raised another point that I think, and here's totally a separate issue to this, and I think PG&E may have this information already, but as we go down this road, why would we not look at an economic analysis that would be applicable to if something happens to the point that the seismic studies show that we cannot continue with this plan? What are the economic impacts of this county? Or what if there is a human failure that we have? I mean, as he pointed out to me, you had that in San Onopri, human aspect, in Fukushima, you had a natural disaster. If that were to happen, what is the economic impact of this county? And I think that an analysis of some sort would be beneficial so that everybody has a full concept of where and what all this means.
Yes, and thank you Supervisor Netchum for raising that, and we'll pass that off to the county administrator's office to include in a future assessment, as Mr. Wiseman, I had the same conversation with him, and what he pointed out is the impact that's occurring economically to the communities around San Onopri and the fact that they've got one, well, two reactors down, the entire plant down in fact, and one of those two may never operate again and that created the situation where they laid off half of their employees. And so it's having a very significant economic impact to that area and it might be well worth the effort to better understand what the consequences of Diablo Canyon no longer operating would be regardless of the reason for that. Supervisor Gibson.
Mr. Chairman, I agree and I think that that, I tend to think that this is not the last item, the last time we're going to talk about the Diablo Canyon Power Plant and its impacts on this county. I think that that's a worthy piece of information to have at a future point when this topic comes up.
And with that, before I call for a vote on the motion, I want to thank everyone that has endured this effort with us this afternoon. It's certainly a very important topic. A lot of information has come forth since we wrote that first letter back in August and as Supervisor Hill pointed out, there were letters written literally years ago recommending that we do learn more about the seismic threat to the Diablo Canyon Power Plant, and the question is how will we best determine that? But thank you for enduring this with us, and I encourage all of you, because the next decision point is at the Coastal Commission on November 14th, to communicate to the Coastal Commission your issues and concerns, as you have done here. So with that, Madam Clerk, a roll call please.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Netchum?
Yes.
Mr. Tishara?
Yes.
And with that, we are adjourned.